All right, we're moving on to item three, building consolidation presentation. Thank you, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you. Feels like I never left.
Exactly.
Can you see us now from the gallery?
Can.
Can you?
Yes.
Look at that. That's an improvement, Lloyd. We're starting on a high point for 2021.
Welcome, everyone.
I apologize to have my back to this side of the council and this side, but as I said, we're doing council in the round, so we're trying to accommodate everybody's view. This is a work that has been ongoing for a couple of years. As you all know, the master plan and joint facilities had done a lot of work on town properties. They did a presentation. I endorsed it to the public. That was done in the chambers, October 19th of 2020, and that's on the town manager's site for anybody who would like to go to look at the master plan overarching that B.L. did. We then, in November, did some smaller enhancements in town. I wanted to do before this and before the budget. Those were the garden plots, the basketball courts, and the pond. Those are done. Anybody wants to look at that? That was done at the November 9th meeting as well, and that's on the manager's site. We have been doing concurrent paths with roofs in the town, and that's a great term that I think Gina and both Donna like to use, and it's accurate. We not only did interface with the Henry Barnard roof, but tonight and in the last meeting, if people want to look at more of the details at our last meeting in December of 2020, we are now embarking on funding to do the roofs of the Eli Whitney and Hazardville Memorial. So while we couldn't, given the terms and the conditions out there and the environment, do a referendum, we didn't stop because the roofs need to be done. So we'd always thought, well, let's do what we can within our budget. So these are three roofs that will be underway. Tonight, this piece of the puzzle is building consolidation. Joint facilities have looked at the big picture. We've been looking very closely. We brought Jeffrey on as deputy director to start to look at facilities. What do we need? What are the costs going forward? We've got a lot of information. And so this evening, we're going to have a presentation on how we can combine services at existing buildings and sell property. Alleluia, praise the Lord, sell properties, generate revenue, and reduce costs and increase efficiency. Just so you have a little preview of what's coming up next, because this has really been a global plan we've embarked on over the last couple of years. Within the next couple of weeks, maybe two or three, we'll be back after a long, hard fought on EverSource property out by, you know, North River Street. We'll be meeting with them to hopefully attain that property. We'll have an update. And also, there will be a meeting very shortly with the Department of Transportation. We're having discussions with them on the train station. So I'll have an update for you either the next meeting or early February on both of those matters. Once we conclude this evening, and maybe there'll be follow-up at the next meeting in January for follow-up questions, we will then start the budget process. We've already commenced to look at that, and we're going to really concentrate this year on some CIP priorities that we had to defer last year that I think we can accomplish this year and yet be fiscally responsible. That will address other things in the budget that we will do there, and this hopefully will be done. And then lastly, I think that we'll be in a position to go to our residents and propose to them in November of 2021 a road and roof referendum project. And I think after the season, they're going to see that you all have been very prudent stewards of their money, that we've done the smaller projects, we've done consolidation tonight, we're going to address some long-range CIP problems in the budget, and then I think we'll have their respect and their confidence to do and continue the roads project, which will close the loop for 20 years. Of course, we'll have to start again, and then on the concurrent path, do the other roofs that we need to do in town plus the schools. And I think they'll see that, wow, they've really, really thought this through. This is a plan that will put the town of Enfield on a, I think, very sound footing for managing our resources for the next couple of decades. So having said that, we're going to move on to the presentation of consolidation. We'll put the first graph up, and I'll just give you an overview. Then I'm going to turn it over to the very capable staff who have worked very, very hard on this. So Jeff, if you can put just the first, the kickoff. And I will have this for you in a handout form, so you'll have it to take with you. We'll put it up on the website tomorrow. And the next slide should be the four properties, and here we go. These are the recommendations, and I'll just give you the overview, and then they're going to go into detail. Alcorn School, upper left, will be moving or proposing for your consideration, social services, and selling 110 High Street. Moving youth services as part of the La Mania closure into this facility as well. Next, if you look at the bottom left, how this will impact the senior center. We would like to relocate the transportation office from High Street to the senior center. The Enfield Annex above right is going to now be the home of the newly relocated recreation department from La Mania, and also moving building and grounds, closing and selling 52 Prospect Street in the process. And then lastly, the bottom right, our acquisition or our rental and future acquisition of the Enfield Express, which is going to allow us to consolidate and move the tax assessor's office, which is partially there, from Town Hall. There is a permanent location and create a shared conference space, state-of-the-art video meeting center in Town Hall, where it will be centrally located for everyone to use. We're also going to touch upon St. Dalbert's, Mr. Belik, and we'll have the date of that. I know that was in December. I believe he came and made the presentation at St. Dalbert's to renovate the gym for tournaments and for theater. And lastly, I'll just touch upon the Strand is also part of this near La Mania. I'll just say it now in case I forget. Nelson is in negotiations with the state to get his money that would hopefully pay for the demolition of that property to be able to merge it with La Mania to market it fairly soon. So this is going to be a high-altitude presentation. I'll give you the handout at the end, but also what we'll be sending you in the next day or two is about a 40-page, in-depth, nuts and bolts, all the details of this plan, square footages, reasoning, processing, so you can really digest it and look at it. And then the second meeting, January 16th, when we come back, maybe we'll do a six to seven to say, all right, what other questions do you have? This is what we are concerned about. And then maybe give us the thumbs up by hoping the green light to implement this plan. Tell you what's amazing about this? It's going to save us a lot of money. It's going to be highly efficient. And also, it does not require us going to referendum, because the money savings and the amounts we're going to spend are minimal compared to what we're going to get. And you're going to see by the end, we can do all of what you're going to see here, not in 10 years, not in five, not in three, not in two, one year. Action, because everybody's been working so hard on this, and all of the committees have for years. So with that, I turn it over to you, Kasia.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome. Kasia, just name and title, and you have the floor, please.
Kasia Persiello, Assistant Town Manager. So the format of this presentation, it's Jeffrey, Donald, and I are going to be taking turns talking about each of the parts of this plan. So I'll kick it off right now. So the first component of this plan is to move the departments currently in the La Mania Center to the Enfield Annex and the former Alcorn School. The La Mania Center, as you know, was built in the 70s and needs millions of dollars' worth of work done through.
Kasia, can Jeff, are you going to be following along here?
He's going to go to the next one, actually. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. So as I was saying, the La Mania Center will need millions of dollars' worth of work done through the CIP over the next 10 years only to maintain status quo without any modernization. It only has seven parking spaces, which is completely inadequate for the activities being done there currently. Moving the departments that are located there will allow us to close the La Mania Center and market the property to allow for transit-oriented development. As part of this move, so recreation would be moved to the Enfield Annex under this plan. It envisions that our DPW staff will renovate the offices in the D Wing of the building to accommodate the rec staff. All recreation programming will be moved to the Annex, which is currently the site of their tons of fun summer camp and the children's summer entertainment series. The Annex also has a gymnasium, pool, recently renovated fields, and the tennis courts that could be used for recreation activities. So now I'll turn it over to Jeffrey to talk a little more in depth about the slideshow in front of you.
So recreation currently resides on mainly the lower level of La Mania. The lion's share of recreation's programming is, you know, more or less spread across town facilities, i.e. gyms, pools, fields, et cetera, with the exception of the gym and a classroom at La Mania. La Mania is mostly used for administrative functions for recreation. These administrative functions are pretty much limited in staffing level and parking, just from the physical size, the footprint of the building and the parcel, the location. So trying to grow that site is challenging. So increasing staff there and additional programming would require a move or splitting that department up across different locations. So what we're proposing in this plan is reutilizing the D Wing at the Enfield Annex. Moving recreation into the Annex's D Wing provides more room for future expansion of the department in terms of staffing and parking. Utilizing the old fermi main office, it's an easy location, especially being designed to already host staff and visitors when it was a high school. Reoccupying this space requires a small investment, as the core infrastructure is already there. This was already booked as office space, and it doesn't really need much more than just kind of reactivation, if you will. Multiple year-round and seasonal programming does go on at the Annex, and a lot of it is hosted by recreation. With the overall space the Annex has to offer, there's still plenty of capacity to focus. So this renovation cost is going to be approximately $25,000. The five-year capital investment savings, which we're going to attribute half of the capital to youth services, half to recreation, is $827,500. And by closing this building out, we'll be also saving $47,550 in operational costs for FY '22. This work will be done by B&amp;G staff primarily. It'll all be done in-house. It could be done, if we get started in February, we should be able to move recreation in before March. Because it's very, the core is there, it's just some sprucing up and some little carpentry along the way.
All right, thank you. Next slide, please, Jeffrey. So next, I'm going to go into the changes for social services, including youth services, which is currently housed at La Mania. So this plan actually moves youth services along with the rest of social services through the Alcorn Building. So Alcorn is currently the home of the Board of Education, including the Transitional Learning Academy. So we've had many conversations with Superintendent Chris Strazek to ensure that the Transitional Learning programming and Board of Ed operations would not be impacted negatively by any of these moves here. Under this plan, youth services will move into the Alcorn Building. In addition, we are also proposing to move social services into Alcorn with youth services to market 110 High Street. Youth services is a component of social services. Unfortunately, over the past several years, the programs have existed separately, which did not allow for any efficiency or streamlining. The Director of Social Services is looking forward to having both youth services and social services together and to benefit from the co-location. So this co-location will allow for parents and caregivers to receive services for multiple family members more conveniently and at once. In addition, this will help the department have shared social workers on-site and other staff that are able to cross-strean on things such as their department-wide crisis response team and to more effectively and efficiently address the needs of our residents. Enfield Television, which is currently located in Alcorn, under this plan, would be moving into an existing space of the Annex, again, better utilizing the Annex. Transportation is also a key component of social services, and unfortunately, Alcorn is not large enough to accommodate youth services, social services, and the transportation office. So under this plan, we move transportation to the senior center. The senior center was originally built with dispatch and offices for dial ride, and it will be really easy to move back there. The change allows all our transportation vehicles to all reside in one place, which is different than now. They're scattered across town, and will also streamline the day-to-day operations for the staff there. This will not impact senior center programming in any way. It is not public-facing. And lastly, with Alcorn, as a part of the plan for the Alcorn School, we're also proposing several outdoor improvements, some of which the town council has already reviewed and approved. So in November, the council voted to expand the community garden program, including adding community garden plots at Alcorn, approximately 20 or so. The town council also approved the construction of a new outdoor basketball court that will be in place during the spring of 2021. And as a part of this move, the students, both involved in youth services and Transitional Learning Academy, will have access to both. And lastly, this plan also envisions expanding the parking lot over at Alcorn. Currently, we have 78 parking spots at the school. Our plan envisions expanding the parking lot to 122 spots and six accessible spots that accommodate the new youth building. I'll turn it over to Jeffrey to go over the PowerPoint in detail with you.
So currently, youth services is based out of La Mania Center. Youth administrative functions are mainly concentrated on the second story, and the youth programming is kind of spread between the kitchen, the gym, the lower level, upper level with the big room, activity room. So this can be a chaperoning challenge, having kids and programming on two levels happening simultaneously. This can be an issue with the staff trying to keep track of everything. Also, restrooms on the second level are really inadequate, so staff have to also escort kids back down to the gym restrooms when they have a lot going on. So again, this is just, you know, poor flow. La Mania in general has parking and other related flow concerns, and the parcel itself doesn't allow for much expansion, which would limit future development. So we're proposing to move youth services to the lower level of Alcorn. Youth moving to the Alcorn lower level, also in conjunction with social services, reunites into one sole department, making it just administratively easier. Utilizing the gym, the kitchen, and the whole level, it's already existing, so we don't really, you know, have to reinvent those types of large spots. The main entrance that we'd be reutilizing would be off the bus loop, so that'd be that northwest corner, nice rebranded entrance. The other nice aspect of this location is youth is still in the Thompsonville area, and it connects with the neighborhood sidewalk system, so it's convenient for walkers. And with all this going on with the parking lot, the traffic pattern, even the existing conditions, it's just better traffic flow. So the cost of this renovation is estimated at about $395,000. We would be saving the other half of the capital investment over the last, over the next five years, but we begin saving about $827,500 in capital cost. We'd also be saving about $47,550 in operational costs for '22. Double Cox provided an estimated tax revenue for this property. We routed there on about $33,000 per year. We would have to do some, have to have this designed and go through permitting, but the work on the youth services side will be handled primarily through building and grounds, since mostly it is taking existing large office spaces and making them into smaller private offices and the like. The contractor portion of the show would be primarily just for HVAC or any other data usage, and we could, we are expecting to get this done before August 1st.
And I'm just going to add, when we talk about estimated tax revenue, you're going to see in the filing properties, we actually give an estimate of what we believe and we have done. For Cindy's benefit, our realtor, we've talked to our consultant about the marketable prices, and what we've talked to Della and John about what the revenues would be. This is the lowest. This is basically, if you were to, and you'll see demolished the La Mania, you have about an acre. Maybe you want to say it's worth $100,000. However, you're not putting a house. You're not putting a market. It's a mixed-use, could be a multi-story structure. So that's a minimum of $33,000. It probably would be triple or quadruple that yearly, what we'll be experiencing, because I'm hopeful to have businesses and residences there. So we, but again, we always go an air on the side of being conservative, and we're fully transparent, and we don't overpredict. So that's the minimum per year that we would generate from the site. Gentlemen, proceed, and lady.
So again, part of this social services plan moving to Alcorn, you know, this is just where they currently are, 110 High Street, the shaded areas, the space that they occupy. Social services and transportation are both at this location. The challenge here is the parcel size. Horizontal expansion is pretty much unavailable to us without either doing something with acquiring more land, or if we're going to add building space going vertically. Service programming in this current configuration is also limited due to the facility size. Without relocating more divisions of social services, we can't take on more staff or more offerings, if you will, at this particular site. It's pretty much maxed out. So we're proposing, again, social services to move over into Alcorn on that lower level, on the same, you know, same level with youth services, reuniting the department. In this particular plan, we're going to be utilizing the old cafeteria and the band room where ETB currently resides and the community room now is. The rebranded main entrance for social services, again, is directly off that bus loop, so just had improved traffic flow, easier getting in, especially with the parking lot being in right in the back, that southwest corner. The bonus to this move is not only, you know, reuniting the two departments, it's still downtown, so we're not leaving downtown. It's only marginally a little bit more east from where it currently resides on High Street, so this is a really good positive. And then transportation. They're really using that one little area at 110 High Street. Again, the parcel size is the big challenge here. We are decentralized. We're there at this location. The buses can't congregate, so that means that drivers are going out, picking up buses all across town, coming here, meeting with the dispatcher, getting rude information. And this just kind of, you know, forces this ad hoc approach to how we manage, you know, magic carpet dial ride and all this other stuff. So in this plan, we're putting them over into the senior center, revitalizing where dial-a-ride was thought into this plan, into shaded areas. These are the two rooms we'd be honing in on moving a supervisor and two dispatchers. There's also other bonuses to this particular move. The senior center has a tremendous parking lot as compared to 110 High Street, so we can get everything in one area. But again, this parcel is just so much physically larger that any expansion with transportation or the senior center in programming or staffing, we have the ability to grow and develop the site. And again, with transportation moving to the senior center, there shouldn't be any issues that the residents or users of the senior center would ever notice. And then here are some of those exterior improvements we were talking about. In this particular rendering, we were depicting a new parking area over the location of our current, or used to be basketball court, so we're expanding that area to have more parking. It's about 44 additional lots over where we are currently. Again, there's a lot going on with the projects that were already approved, with the basketball court being built towards the Garden Street side. We have the Play Escape, so we have the community gardens coming in, so there's going to be a lot of activity. It just seems right now to do, to do parking here just seems suiting, not only just for all this extra use at the site, but with all this extra, you know, community programming. This is really becoming a community center with everything that's happening. So again, what's nice about this site, we're downtown, we have great interconnectivity with the sidewalks. Again, we have sidewalks in Garden Street, New King Street, Enfield Streets, so we don't lose that downtown Thompsonville pedestrian-friendly environment. So the renovation cost of moving social services, whoa, echoing. Okay. The renovation cost is about $415,000 to move social services to Alcorn and transportation to the senior center. What would be the five-year capital savings of not doing any work on 110 High Street would be about $235,000. The operational cost savings of closing that building would be $57,000 for FY '22. Our estimated tax revenue for that property is about $15,000 per year, and we had an estimated sale price of approximately $400,000 for that property. Now, the Alcorn School, this part of the Alcorn School renovation is going to require an architect. We're thinking about four months to get through design and permitting. We allowed for two months for bidding, for public bid, because a lot of that work is going to have to be some specialized work that buildings and grounds cannot do, but they will also be working on what the ETB room, converting that into the reception and office areas and other things. They'll be working in concert with the contractor, and we're expecting that to be done before December 1st to move to get social services done. Transportation, the design and permitting is just very small design work and permitting through the building department, and that would be completed, again, in-house through building and grounds with, and again, another December completion date.
Perfect. Thank you, Jeffrey. Next slide, please. All right. The next part of the plan here envisions closing and selling 52 Prospect Street, the current building and ground facility. So this property is surrounded by residential housing, which is not ideal for the loud equipment and early start times of our B&amp;G operations. Buildings and ground staff would be relocated to the Annex, which will be closer to the Public Works complex, and in turn, it'll be easier to manage staff and support functions will all be centralized. The B&amp;G woodshop is actually currently located at the Annex already, and this, the Annex location has the space needed to build an equipment shed outside for all the B&amp;G equipment that, right now, they don't have a place to store.
So again, this is their current location on Prospect Street. You know, this site is pretty much just maxed out. The challenges we are facing with this location is expansion, especially when it comes to equipment and vehicles. Items like plow trucks, field equipment, snow removal equipment should be inside and protected from the elements. Keeping the garage open that we have currently, where we have the old horse drawn area, there's that black roof to the side of the picture. We're putting things in Conex boxes just to try to keep everything that's seasonally active in an enclosure where we can readily get it. You can kind of just tell on this, you know, overview of the site that with all the equipment and trucks, there's really nowhere to go. Additional parking for employees, you know, if we were to grow this site, you know, there's really nowhere to move. So again, we've already started pulling out other parts of the division. We're already occupying the Annex with the woodshop, HVAC, and electrical. So that's the only way we can kind of manage buildings and grounds. And in this plan, we're proposing to put everybody at the Annex. A lot of items are already there. Again, we have functions that are existing at the Annex, the woodshop, electrical HVAC, and we're going to be targeting a couple of things here. One, it's really the old varsity locker room. There's a 5,000 square feet. It already has the old coach offices. It has showers, lockers, storage areas, a couple areas we can renovate for break rooms, and it has a lot of footprint. It's a larger footprint than where we were at Prospect Street. And again, this is kind of a straightforward renovation. The core is there, the IT, the electrical, the data. It's more of a reactivation, a little light sweep up and cleanup. The other big part of this plan is putting 10,000-square-foot equipment facility at this site. Again, this site is very nice because the Annex has about 50 acres of land, so this is a really great site to really develop, address our parking concerns, and, you know, has a lot of potential for other things. Chris, the renovation cost is approximately $354,000, with the majority of it is going to be like Jeffrey was saying, the Butler Building that would hold the equipment, try to get all the equipment in there and have something large enough that would house that. We would save about $385,000 by not investing in the 52 Prospect Street any longer, and our operational savings for FY '22 would be up $60,000 a year. If we were to sell the building, we'd be getting about $16,000 a year in taxes and approximately a $420,000 sale price. But this will require some, again, some use of an architect, design and permitting for the building. It requires some time to go out to bid. And again, the majority of the work is going to be done by the contractor erecting the building, but there is some light work that B&amp;G will do inside to get that, the locker room and crew leader area with things done. And again, we're trying to, we would try to never have that done by January 1st.
So the next part of this consolidation is actually a plan for the Enfield Express. It's hard to believe that our lease for the Enfield Express began only about six months ago. It's been a tremendous success during this first year. In this plan, we are moving the offices, the tax assessor and tax offices to the Express. With all the staff in one place, tax assessors will be better able to act as a one-stop shop to serve our community. So in the place of the tax office downstairs in Town Hall, we plan to construct a multimedia conference room. The Town Hall is a centralized location with ample parking. In addition, having this conference space on the first floor would allow us to securely contain access to the building. The space would be renovated with the help of ETB to ensure that it's compatible with live streaming of meetings when needed. But we are keenly aware of how there's not enough meeting space at Town Hall for committees, commissions, and even our own staff, unfortunately. For example, subsidies of council, joint facilities, beautification, historic district, and commission on aging could all benefit from having this additional available space for meetings. Jeffrey?
Currently, you know, tax assessors are co-located between the lower level of Town Hall and the Enfield Express. This provides some staffing concerns for administrative oversight, splitting a division. This provides some staffing concerns for administrative oversight, splitting a division. The current location in Town Hall is easily congested, especially in the tax seasons. The customer service area is very small, and the limited area pushes lines, especially again in the tax seasons, you know, out the doors and into the hallways. This can be very disruptive to other staff and department functions. Plus, it just makes, you know, a nightmare moving everybody around in there. Storage and workstations, customer service base, we're kind of locked into that 1,200 square foot area. Town Hall is already loaded to the gills. So really, any expansion at this site, at this location, we're done. So again, Enfield Express, great site, close to Town Hall, large building, 4,500 square feet, has about a 1.7 acre size lot, lots of parking. There's a lot of good things going on over here. And one of the best things, it's designed for high volume transactions. It was a, it was a bank, so it's designed to move people in and out efficiently and effectively and handle money safely. What's also nice about it being larger, it enables us to do new things that we didn't do before, like the leaf bag pickup and other resident-based interactions that like would need an in-person transaction or people that would like to come out and do in-person things. This site also has a drive-up. Drive-up is something we could never do at Town Hall in its configuration. So having that contactless, especially during this pandemic, this contactless drive-through, that's just convenient in general. This has a lot of stuff going for us that makes us a little bit more flexible in what we can offer our residents across town.
All right. So at the, at the express, before we get started on the renovation cost of it, there is the, the potential for expanding the parking between, between Town Hall and the express. So with the property just to the west of the drive-through area, we could probably fit about 55 to 60 more cars for parking there too for future expansion as well. But the renovation cost for moving, moving, moving assessment and revenue to the express and outfitting the express is about $81,000. Again, we have to do some, just permitting in-house. And again, it'll be all constructed in-house using B&amp;G staff. And we hope to have that done before May 1st.
And the conference room that we're going to try to look at building in the lower level of the tax assessor, what we've come to find out that, you know, there's never enough meeting space across the town. That always seems to be something between staff, committees, agencies. You really can't get enough meeting space, it seems to be. So again, converting that tax assessor area into a modern video conferencing center is going to be a really huge benefit and asset to the town. Similar to the Enfield Room and its capabilities with the wifi, the streaming, the conference calling. We're just short in these. And then, you know, modern business and, you know, through the course of this pandemic, you know, these, these types of facilities, that type of capability, they're not going anywhere. They're here to stay, and it's just a really good thing to have at our disposal. What's also nice, it's located on the lower level. So, you know, that whole meeting area between the Enfield Room, where we'd be in the tax assessor's office with this new AV conference room, it kind of isolates all that kind of foot traffic in one spot. So we're not moving through the whole building and going upstairs and causing all sorts of, you know, noise and disruption. And again, we have plenty of parking in the back of Town Hall. It's already centrally located. Everybody knows where it is. So it's just a really nice thing to do.
And this renovation cost is projected at about $43,000. And it would be done in concert with the assessment of revenue moved to the express. Again, so with the, with the completion date of, in May, that, that would be our goal is to get it done before May 1st.
And this last piece of this consolidation plan impacts the St. David's Gymnasium, which touches our Town Hall property. So we currently have an option to purchase this gymnasium that expires at the end of next year or to this year, at 2021, end of 2021. So the gymnasium is historic. For anyone who's, who's been there, they know it's absolutely huge. It's approximately 9,800 square feet and can be used for tournament-style basketball and other sports or activities in town. In addition, it has a beautiful, large theater that can be used by local groups to promote arts in Enfield. I've actually spoken with one of the local nonprofits who have said it would be great for big-scale musical productions. That might be a little bit too large for their current small theater. And as, as you are all aware of, the future goal for the land behind the Town Hall is to create Higgins Park, including a walking trail, playscape and open green space. As far as the vision for Higgins Park, we hope to have a large community pool. When renovating, if we go forward with renovating this gymnasium, we anticipate that the final product would have locker rooms in preparation for the future swimming pool. And I'll turn it over to Jeffrey with that.
So St. Albert's Gym located on 90 Alden Avenue. Again, this is a very large gym, just shy of 10,000 square feet. It's in a great location. It abuts not only our town property behind the softball field and parking lot, but it also abuts the back of the Enfield Express. So it just, it just, really great location. This area being, you know, eyed for development of Higgins Park, especially with a community pool, it just gives us a place where if we were to put a pool in, a place for infrastructure, a place to reutilize restrooms, a place to get water and other utilities. Again, this is a large gym with a stage and this off-the-stager's changing room. So this is a very nice setup, can be used for tournament-style basketball or other port-related sports, or again, for cultural events with those, with those changing rooms. So with this particular project and its location, it's really, it's a really interesting one.
And this renovation cost is projected at about $400,000. We're expecting, I'm sure it's going to take four months or so for permitting and design and another eight months for construction with, with the completion date by February 1st of 2022.
Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it back to Chris for any closing remarks.
Well, I think we had one final slide with John Wilcox, just to do the summation, I believe. There we go.
Excuse me. You're right. Yes, there we go.
This, this slide basically ties together all the individual projects and puts it all into one overall cost summary. As you can see, we have Recreation Move, Youth Services, Social Services, Transportation. The renovation costs will, will be, as I stated, handled in-house as much as possible. And we probably, you know, require some additional overtime and those estimates of additional overtime costs are included in these amounts. The five-year capital investment avoidance is, these properties that, the three properties that we're talking about have been in town for a while. They have several projects that are going to be expensive coming up in the, in the near future, such as HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrades, pouring, roof replacement for 52 Prospect Street, roof repairs. And those estimated costs over the next five years are, as shown on there, totaling about $2,275,000. The annual operating cost avoidance is, obviously, if we're not in those buildings anymore, we're not, we're not going to have those costs. They include water, electric, natural gas. Buildings and grounds costs are like routine maintenance and snow mowing, clearance, mowing, et cetera, including, and they also include the custodial services cost to clean the buildings on a daily basis. Do we have any, any additional questions from you or turn it back over to Chris?
Yeah, we'll wrap it up and then we can open up the questions.
So I think before Chris finishes, I mean, I know Chris is going to release a detail that, so I know some of you may have some, let's hold off on our detailed questions. You're going to get the information. If you have a high-level question, I mean, again, the essence of time. And I think we'll get our questions together, be prepared for the next meeting, because I know you're going to have that out for the public. And I mean, again, just a high-level question, I mean.
Yeah, what I'd like to, what I'd like to just share is that I think because of all the hard work that's gone before, with the joint facilities, with the master plan, with council looking at it. I'll tell you, me, three years ago, well, it's almost going to be three years for me in May, it was overwhelming, daunting and almost a task I didn't think that we could even grapple, that we could even undertake. It just seemed there was so much, it was just so overwhelming that where would we begin? Well, with all of these different projects bringing, like I said, the baby steps, some of the smaller, the medium, the long-range plan, this falls well within it. And again, this, I'm giving you the high range. We have all the details. We have all the weeds. We're into the weeds. So the beauty about this is we're not going to say, okay, Chris, as you heard, if we give you the green light, now you got to do all the work and what, you'll come back in two years and we'll start it. We can have all of it mostly done within a year because we have answered all those questions. That 40-page, I call it the nuts and bolts document, is done. We didn't come before you half-cocked. We came, I'm going to hand out this presentation, you will put it online. Then you'll have all of the information to look at for the next meeting. But I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'll tell you is that we were very transparent about this. We know it's going to pay the 1.3 million. Over five years, we know we're going to save 2.2 because we know we have those costs projected out now. The, you might say the annual operating, well, we're still going to have some of those. We are going to have some, but you have to understand, the annex, we're heating, we're air conditioning it, and it's empty. The Alcorn, all of these areas, we're heating. It's empty. We're air conditioning it. It's empty. Where this is going to save all of those operating costs and, as we said, the exterior maintenance and reduce custodial because we already have people there. The other thing is, one of the most frustrating things I have as a resident or a person is trying to get a darn parking spot. You know, you want to go somewhere and you want to attend something or find something, and you can't get a darn parking spot. Every one of these buildings has no parking that we're getting rid of. And also, just, it's like the old movie I love, Money Pit. They're all money pits. All those, we have documented, that isn't an estimated cost of 2.275 over five years. That's documented. So we're going to avoid that, and you're just throwing good money after bad because the buildings are too old. But what I can tell you is because of the thought that's gone into this, all the extra parking at Alcorn, the superintendent is thrilled, by the way. I won't speak for Mr. Drezick. We have a great working relationship. We've consulted him every step of the way. He's thrilled that those students are going to have not only gardens, but a basketball court. They'll have appropriate parking there now. If you want to go next door, like we say, for the tax assessor's office or to pay your taxes, or you have a question, you know what it's like in the bottom lobby here. People lined up frustrated, upset. Over at the Enfield Express, you can drive through two windows, or we have five walk-up windows that are going to be operational for the bank with ample, beautiful spacing and seating areas for people to enjoy. Building and grounds, my goodness, those guys do a miraculous job. Can you imagine the job they're going to do when they, when they actually have a facility that they can come to work and not squabble over a parking space and not know where they're going to put the equipment from the fall to the winter? All of these things, social services, again, to bring social services and youth services together under one roof now, they're going to be so much more efficient. This plan, I, I think it is perfect, I'm being fresh or cute, but we, nothing's perfect, but this is pretty darn close. For the work staff has done for what we have, to bring this all together, to be in a position for the savings, the efficiency, and to be able to do it in a year at that cost, that's pretty remarkable. I will tell you one cost that isn't here. It's in the detail on the 40-page. I don't want to leave hanging out there where you say, okay, LeMoyne, now we're going to have a town-blighted building, right? Move everybody out and it's going to sit there. We've put into the plan too, and John is working the budgeting, it's about six-something to demolish it. I want to demolish it. I don't want it to become an eyesore. I don't want it to become a place where people, we don't want to congregate to congregate. The Strand, we are looking at state money to demolish that. I'd like to by the fall, the summer, excuse me, have those demolished, have at least a green area of a park while we market it across from the pond. And it will not be an eyesore. It'll be, again, an asset. Now, I'll tell you, over at the express, because of your vision to lease that building, and we made sure it worked, we didn't just buy it, we did a two-year lease, but we also, the last year of the lease, all of the lease payments goes toward the purchase price. John's listed it. We didn't ignore it. It says right there, 660 to purchase it if we want in two years. But that spot, 1.7 acres, not only allows us to do the standalone for the assessors, and we have vaults there, it's very secure. The back area is going to give us about 60 parking spaces. The back of Town Hall has about 65, to tell you the size of that. You saw the amount of people that come to the Enfield Market in the summer. They're parking all over God's creation. We'll fill that parking lot every weekend, but also, that allows us now, when we do St. David's, to have the tournament-class basketball and for other sporting facilities and theater, people will actually be able to park there and get in and not be frustrated and also access other times of the year, the Higgins Park. Now, what we're going to do, this is a program. We kept it, as I can tell you, we showed everything. You'll see the detail. I hope you approve it. And then that will free us up now to look in the budget, to say what improvements we can do. I want to do the transfer station we talked about with Mr. Kiner and others. I want to start to begin at Higgins Park, to clear that parking and add it to Town Hall and some other infrastructure that we need, all within our fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers this year. I'm hoping to have a repeat of last year. I can't promise anything. It's a little too soon. We have to see what the state does and what the Board of Ed does. But this town has been fiscally well-run, and even with COVID, I think we are in good shape. I'm not going to get into all the other businesses that are coming into town, the increase in building permits and revenues, the companies that are coming into town. I think we are in very solid fiscal shape to be able to engage and embark on this project, which is going to save a lot of money. And I can't thank staff enough. And not only those you heard from tonight, all of the directors, you know, police has input on these, libraries does, all of the directors, we work as a team. Everybody has some skin in the game and everybody contributed to this. We've talked to all the stakeholders, and I'm sure there'll be bumps along the way and some unexpected challenges, but boy, I think it's a heck of a start. So with that, I will open it up to general questions. And as I say, you'll have the 40-page document tomorrow, and we'll put it back on from 6:00 to 7:00 for the 16th to get in any in-depth questions and see if you want to give it the green light then.
Counselor Lauren Guyer?
I was just wondering if all the department heads, they all concurred with this move and that you have their support?
Yes. We were, well, yes, we've talked to everybody. Kosh has met with all the directors. And even if I didn't, if I thought it was the appropriate thing to do, I would recommend it to you. We're never going to get 100%. Somebody may get a smaller office. Somebody may be a little further from the bathroom. So I try to be very inclusive, but I don't run the town. It's unlike you running for office, it's not a democracy. But I try to get as much buy-in because without it, it wouldn't work. But so far, and I, I'll have all of our staff up there, nod your head if you are all in favor of it, and the directors we've talked to. And I'm not close enough to give them a little whack, so I think it's sincere. I, I have to tell you, I think, Lori, they are very excited. And to get the Director of Finance to actually be exuberant about something like this, to me, that's the stamp, the final stamp of approval.
Calther Spurazza?
I know it's 7 o'clock, Chris, but I just want to say to you and to your staff, I don't think I've ever seen a presentation as thought out as this one was. In the beginning, I had a little heart palpitation because we were talking about closing the Alcorn, I mean, the LeMoyne Center, and as you know, Thompsonville needs these things. But you know what? The kids are going to have two basketball courts potentially, potentially a pool. The youth center is going to still be in Thompsonville. So the speed with which this is going to get done, the cost savings are real, the efficiencies in it. And you know, Chris, when you and I, you were the Public Safety Director, I was the chief, we would walk with the former manager downtown and we'd look at these things and say, someday, someday. If there's one thing that always frustrated me was how government didn't move. The Strand Theater should have been gone a long time ago, and I love that place. But the bottom line is, all these things are going to be done quickly, saving the town money and making it better for everybody. So I think, Chris, you've done more here than the last three town managers that I've seen. So, thank you.
For the record, potentially three basketball courts.
Yes, because we're doing, and then the only one potential, I think, given the commitment and excitement about St. David's, I think that would be the third. And that's tournament-style, chief, 10,000 square feet. It's going to be incredible for the youth.
Counselor Bosco?
Well, Chris, you did it, and your staff did it. I did not want Fermi. I wanted it gone. And you know what? With this, with this thing you got, it well makes sense to keep it. And, you know, you still don't have it factored in there about how much we're going to get from the properties that we're selling. So them numbers are nowhere near as bad as they even look. And then, you know, the yearly increases once we sell them. So I think this is really great. I'm very excited. I'm very thankful to everybody involved. And the only thing I've seen, and of course, my wife always says I got to have one bad thing to say, is the garage going to be big enough? 10,000 square feet's not that big down at the.
You get that question with the detail, all right? Let's hold that because I mean.
Yeah, we'll wait for the next one. I'm sure, I'm sure.
That's what I wanted to bring up.
The Director of Public Works is smiling, so I'm glad, I'm sure he'd be glad to accommodate you in double the size, but we'll wait till the next time.
So hold off. Again, we want to, we're getting late. We got to ask high-level questions. Counselor Riley?
So just real quick, Ken, on the last financial slide that we had, are we going to get a little more in-depth detail?
Yes. Yes.
Kind of like how much the buildings are going to sell, might sell for, and how much projected income could come down to market for five years?
Yeah, we put, from what our real estate people told us for the two of the buildings, we're working on the third, and also, we estimated what the tax revenue would be, but there are very specific costs for every part of this, revenue side, expenditure, and then also what we're going to bring in. What I thought, I never try to promise more than we can deliver. We try to be conservative, so I didn't really try to ballyhoo and come here and tell the public, oh, we're going to save you all kinds of money, even though I think we will. We want to be honest about what we're going to spend upfront, and I know we're going to save money in the long run, but we try to balance it so that everything in that 40-page report, I think, will, there'll be every answer to every question, hopefully, that you have.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Counselor Mangini?
Thank you, Chris, for a wonderful presentation. I'm actually looking forward to reading it. But I do just have one quick question. Are we going to be leasing the gym from the Santa Daubert's? Is that the plan to lease?
That's a very good question, and I'm glad you reminded me because we wanted to do the high level, if you want to proceed with it, because Mr. Belik is the one who gave us the price and was actually going to do it. So we have a couple of options. At the next meeting, we can explore them. If you want to go forward, we can either purchase it, and then the town attorney and legal will have to look at some of the sightline issues, or if we wanted to lease it long-term, we could do that. Me, I like to buy and own what we have, especially on an asset like that. So that would be for us to purchase it, and then we'd have to work out some of the legal logistics, but I think it's doable, once you tell us, give us the green light that we want to do.
Thank you for that, and then also, I want to concur with Carl, who stated very nicely that you have done more in your tenure than the past, I don't know, three, four town managers that have been here. And it's just amazing, thinking out of the box, the creativity, I thank you for that.
And I thank you, but I really have to say, and I'm not being humble, I have the most incredible directors and staff of any town in the state of Connecticut. They want to be here, they're enthusiastic, they do more and more work. My mother always used to say, if you want to get something done, give it to a busy person. When we interviewed, and we've hired almost all the people you see up there, I'm very proud of them, when they came in, I said, you know, if you want to golf on Friday afternoons and take it easy, go to one of the area towns. If you want to work your bottom off, come to Enfield. And I also have to tell you this, I sat here during all of those managers, and the only reason I can get done what I did is because of all of you. You get a manager who's constantly, if he's going to be told, no, don't do that, we don't think so, his hands are tied. This council, I think, shared my frustration coming in, like Carl did, seeing for so many years these things were talked about, you wanted action, and you gave us authority to do it, and that's why we're here today. It is a group. It takes all hands on deck to do these things, and we have a perfect team in place right now, between the council and this staff. So I thank you, too.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Ciccola, excuse me.
Really, it's just that I have several questions. So before the next meeting, do you want all of our questions handed to you, or do you want us to come prepared to ask them next meeting?
I think...
Because I'd much rather just give you my questions.
Yes, that's a very good point. Anything you see from the 40, give it to us, whatever we can answer before that meeting, we will, and then we'll open it up for 6:00 to 7:00, just to sort of roundtable it and share the bigger, because usually you have questions that everybody actually is interested in hearing the answers to, so we can share them at the 6:00 to 7:00, but that's a good point. Send them all to my office when you, when you review it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Quesada?
Yeah, great presentation, Chris. Kudos to all of the directors for your creativity in this project. Just, I just have one quick question, in this regards to the D-Wing over at Fermi. Did everybody take into effect that there's a state program that's running over at Fermi, the CNA program that they have, it's a testing site for the state?
I, I don't know that. We'll defer, and that's one of the ones we'll have the answer for next time. They pretty much did hands, I mean, boots on the ground to investigate all these sites, and they also talked to the Board of Ed, so I am hopeful that they've taken into account, and we certainly will, before we proceed, and we'll have an answer at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, you know, Chris, thank you to you and your staff, and I think, you know, I think we've talked about this for three years, where, you know, we debate things and we talk about direction and what we want to do, and the Facilities Committee, which we reestablished four years ago, Joint Board of Ed, Town Council, Deputy Mayor Suzak, Counselor Riley, Counselor Ciccola, again, spending all that time on all those buildings, all the discussions with your staff, with consultants, with Board of Ed members, with members from the public as well, who serve in that committee. It's funny, when you look at all the stuff that's been done and where we're at, you're right, it actually, it's amazing when someone says you're not getting anything done. Well, there's, there's domino effects when you do this stuff, especially if you look at where the pieces were moving in your presentation, that's what I appreciate, that, again, we've put a lot of thought, both from a town perspective, from a committee perspective, we're involving the Board of Education in this as well. So this isn't just someone who, you know, I got a grand scheme and I'm doing it all by my own. Again, your staff did exactly, you listened, again, your staff listens to the debate that's going on on the council floor, they implement, they understand what it is, then they implement it, and that's the point of the project. And so that's how it's supposed to work, in my opinion. Again, you can certainly disagree with me, but if local government's going to work, or any level of government at this point, then none of it seems to work anymore. If you don't talk to each other and have some honest debate, and then adjust, Deputy Mayor Suzak, I mean, they've adjusted this year what we've had to do with some of our projects, we're going to be talking about the roofs later, I mean, all the things that we've had to adjust. It's, it's interesting that people don't recognize it, well, there's little, sometimes you make little moves on a chessboard so you can do the checkmate when it's time. And I think right now, knock on wood, I appreciate the detail. You know, again, I understand, for me, the biggest thing is, you know, Alcorn is a beautiful building. Or Alcorn's a beautiful piece of property, and I know there's people still in town who call it info high, as they should. And now that where that court's going to go, people don't realize in the back part of that property, how beautiful a little section that is, near the, you know, when you go to Garden Street and everything else. We're developing it, and we're bringing, we listened, this is the point I want to make, we were at a meeting, I know you were there with me, I can't remember what it was, maybe it was three years ago, and people were saying, you know, hey, you guys took away my basketball court, Alcorn. And it bothered us. I remember the conversation we had, and guess what? We listened. We may not be able to do it tomorrow, but we get there. And again, for me, redesigning out, because it's a beautiful building, and youth services should be with both the Board of Education, where they, you know, again, perfect match, and it's in perfect part of the town, it's still in Thompsonville, but in a beautiful old building that we're maintaining. So again, for me, that's the biggest piece of this, and I think it's great. Your staff did a great job, and again, I just want to say, this is years of planning, and now it's, again, what we always talk about, the hardest part is implementation. So I'm looking forward to implementation.
Me, too. And like I say, I thank you for the patience. Sometimes, as you say, it is dominoes, and people say, well, why are you doing the Enfield Express? Why are you doing a basketball? We had the grand scheme, but it takes this time, and that's why I wanted to do it in phases. And some of the things, there are people who have, you know, fond memories of different buildings, and you have, I think, the biggest difficult choice is no one to hold them, no one to fold them. Luckily, they kept Alcorn and refurbished it, and look what we're going to get from it. I think getting the Enfield Express was a very good idea, but also Santa Daubert's, you know, preserving that historical site and making it into a beautiful center, and then getting rid of some facilities that have served as well, but as I say, now we're just too cost prohibitive. And I, again, I thank the staff, they didn't, like you said, we didn't just throw this on the wall. We had to come back to the drawing board quite a few times to say, no, that's not going to work, talk to this director, talk to these folks, go out there, look at it. It was very thoughtful, and as I said, I think you'll be impressed with the details because the details are there. We got into the weeds, and that's why we're in a position to be able to implement this as quickly as the next meeting, if you give us the green light. So I thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you, sir. Again, thank you to the staff, everyone who's, who's out in TV land, Jeff, Kasha, Donald, John, if I'm missing Lori, Nelson, and of course, Attorney Talberg. We're going to end, we're going to give a quick two, two-minute break. I have a motion to adjourn a special meeting. By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Ciccola, is there a favor, say aye? Folks, we'll be back in two minutes, quick recess, if you have to, and then we'll be back at 7:00, 7:14. Good evening, everyone. This is, I'm sorry for the little delay, but we had a very big presentation from 6:00 to 7:00. This is the regular meeting on Monday, January 4, 2021, of the Enfield Town Council. It is 7:16. And prayer, Counselor Quesada, please. Everyone, please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to everybody, and today's blessing. As we look forward to a brand-new year, let us not forget all that we have witnessed in 2020. May we bless and continue to help our neighbors in Enfield, especially those in need physically, mentally, and emotionally. May we bless our first responders, our volunteers, our essential workers, our town employees, and our educators as they continue to maintain and grow Enfield as a caring, thriving community. Please bless us as we continue to weather this unknown together, mourning and mending with those who have been hit the hardest. Please let us see, when this is over, that we have come together to be the best for our community, moving it forward, for it is in tough times that we must invest in Enfield to bring it to a better future.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Quesada?
Present.
Counselor Hamler?
Here.
Mayor Lubick?
Here.
Counselor Mangini?
Here.
Counselor Mueller?
Here.
Counselor Riley?
Here.
Counselor Frazza?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Here.
Counselor Ungary?
Here.
Counselor Bosco?
Here.
Counselor Ciccola?
Here.
Is 11 members present and not are absent?
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item four, the fire evacuation announcement. Case for fire, we have exit in the back of the building, please exit orderly left or right, out the doors, or to the doors to our left, and to some counselors' right. First door out, when you leave the door, first door to the left, down the stairs and out into the parking lot in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, the minutes of the preceding meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the special meeting of December 21st, 2020?
Motion.
By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, subtractions? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor and one abstention, Suzanne? Moving on to the regular meeting of December 21st, 2020, I have a motion to approve.
Well, second.
By Counselor Riley, second by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor, one abstention, Suzanne? Special guests, we have none. Correct. Moving on to public communications, we currently do not have anyone here. Moving on to item eight, council communications. Counselor Mangini has the floor. Go ahead, Counselor Mangini.
I just wanted to wish everyone Happy New Year, safe, prosperous, and I also would like to request through our mayor, through our town manager, if we could have Patricia from the Health Department come at some point, one of our council meetings, getting requests from the public, and I think it would also be beneficial for all of us to understand where we are with the COVID situation and how the state is administering the vaccinations and a little bit more disclosure, a little education, I think it would be beneficial. And I do want to thank our governor and our town, especially, staff for doing a superb job in keeping our workers safe and helping us, you know, work with the rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any communications? Hearing none, we move right on to item nine, the town manager communications. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, Donna, I didn't see you. Donna has a counsel on item eight, sorry, go right, right ahead, my bad.
That's all right. First, two mayor, two town managers, can we get an update on the railroad? Can we get an update on the railroad? Road tracks on, I guess, right now they're going through Abbey Road and they're going on Hazard Avenue. I mean, we had no activity for probably, I don't know, I don't ever see decades, maybe, Joe? And now they're busy as bees there, but man, that road was bad before, it is horrendous right now.
They're on the Westerly.
Yes. Well, actually, and also where Abbey meets Bradbrook is, it's really bad, it's just really bad. And also, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items E, F, G, H, and I to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
So before, we have F, G, H, and I, E is, so, been removed, so, so we just, it's F, G, H, and I.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Motion made, items F, G, H, and I, I have a motion to suspend the rules by Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Mueller, is there any conversation on the motion? By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 11 in favor, Suzanne, zero against the motion. You have the floor, you okay? Sorry.
I'm all set now.
Yeah, sorry, anyone else before we move on? Now, official, town manager, number nine, town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Just to respond briefly at this juncture to Cindy, we will extend the invitation of Patrice Sulik. We had spoken previously. As you can well imagine, she's incredibly busy and overwhelmed at this juncture, planning for the inoculations and vaccinations. We've been in constant touch with her, she is, and we participate in... We've been in constant touch with her, she is, and we participate in the mayor and others of our staff every Thursday morning on a call with her and our North Central Health District Region for updates. Kasia was on a call today, the governor had, about his plan that he will be unveiling about the next steps of vaccinating Connecticut. And I will just tell you, we've been good partners with Patrice. We've actually offered space to help do the vaccinations, if that would help her from her current location, and we've done that in the past when we've offered it to employees. And also, you may not have seen a memo I disseminated this afternoon. Aaron Rigott, our chief of EMS, has been talking to Patrice. As you know, with this vaccine, they've got to observe people 15 minutes after they give the vaccine, and sometimes they were short of staff, because the next phase, the Department of Health will be doing our essential workers and residents. Patrice had asked if we might be able to help, once or twice a month, have EMS personnel who qualifies to assist. And I know the council would have supported it, so I went ahead and sent that to you and said, without any objection, we would do that to help our essential workers and our residents. So we have a good working relationship, and we'll see if we can get her for one of the next upcoming meetings, depending on her schedule. Well, I thank you all. What I have, really only one item, and I think it's really bittersweet, but very important. This evening, we have, as you've noticed, Suzanne Elekni, our town clerk, is with us, but she technically retired on December 31st. Suzanne started with the town in 1977 as a part-time clerk typist, and she was appointed town clerk April 25th, 1988. She has been with the town well over four decades, and it's just a testament to her commitment and dedication to her hometown where she lives and raised her family, that she would be here, because due to certain circumstances, we have interviewed and we've offered a job with her assistance and input to a new town clerk, but it's not going to occur until February, and because of some staffing in her office, we asked, we know you retired, Suzanne, but would you do the next two town council meetings in January? And true to her form and her kind spirit, she agreed to do it. We're fortunate. I have to tell you, I've known her for all, well, most all of the years she's been here, and she's been here longer than I have. And I can tell you that she is so highly respected, she's beloved, not only by all of our directors and employees, but our residents. I get more compliments about Suzanne and the time she takes and her staff, her beautiful way, never raising her voice, never losing her cool. I'd like to say I taught her that, but you all know that that's too far from the truth. But really, never, never losing her cool and helping people in stressful situations. You don't realize, across the board, how many lives the town clerk affects, from recording documents, in real estate closings, her keeping all of that going during COVID, where people had to get in and record things, accommodating them. Then we all know what she went through. I really would say one of the most difficult, but high points of her career was doing the absentee ballots and the remote voting in this last presidential election, which was just a huge undertaking. She did it flawlessly and in good cheer. No one deserves a healthy and long retirement more than Suzanne, so we wanted to recognize her this evening. And I know that we're going to show, we had this one print, and the council, on behalf of the council and the grateful town, we're going to present this to Suzanne, and we'll give it to her tomorrow, that hopefully she'll hang in her home here in Enfield and look back upon her years here so fondly, as we think of her and remember her with great love and affection. So I'd like to say to Suzanne, thank you, Suzanne, for all of your selfless efforts as town clerk, your patience, your kindness, and God bless you and have a healthy, wonderful retirement.
Thank you, sir, Suzanne. I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything you'd like to say? I mean, the reward retirement doesn't really, we hear that a lot here, but people seem to hang on.
We just sort of hate to leave, that's all it comes right down to. It's just very nice, the years that I've worked here. I couldn't have had a better experience. It's been wonderful knowing all of you, meeting every council member, has just proven to me how important the town is to all of you over the years. And also, the people who work in the administration, they're just great people. I think we're all very, very fortunate, and I'm going to miss you all, but I'm looking forward to staying home for a little while, too. Thank you all very much.
And I think for, people know that that is our last watercolor photo, and there is not a more, there's not a more appropriate individual to who should be getting it than Suzanne Old Nicky. So I mean, it's, these are one of those little, little things that we do in this town that are special. That's a beautiful photo, and so Suzanne, you obviously earned it, and I mean, really, we're glad that you actually have the final photo. It's actually very appropriate, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I've known Suzanne for a long time. I actually grew up with her daughter, so I've known her for a long time. Suzanne, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anything else from the town manager report?
No. I would just like to say that we concluded last Sunday pursuant to our contract, our indoors Enfield farmers market. It was, again, a remarkable success on short order, having never done it before. As I told you, in the summer market, both the people who were attending it and supporting it asked if we could continue it indoors, as did the vendors. You all know, we started last July with probably about 20, and with COVID, we were unsure if we'd even get people to come to it. And by the end, we had to extend it through October, which we hadn't planned on doing. We had over 80 vendors there. We started at the square to do indoor. I thank NAMDAR, our partners there, who let us use the square at no cost, and their manager was so helpful in arranging this with Connie Preventure and Danielle in our offices. And again, we started with about 30 or 40 vendors, and we ended just before Christmas with over 80. So we're very happy. I thank everybody, Connie, for her ingenuity with it, her dedication, her assistant Danielle. Kasia, Lori, and Debbie worked very hard on it as well, and we're going to come back bigger, better, and stronger, summer of 2021, on the town green, and hopefully expand it even a little further. So we look forward to that, and we thank all of the residents and people from the region who came and supported it.
Any, Councillor Ungar?
I just wanted to thank you for allowing the farmers market to move indoors at the mall, and it's great of NAMDAR to let all the people come, and it was a great success, great turnout. And I know Connie worked really hard with everyone, and I exhibited there myself, so thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions for the town manager? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item 10, the town attorney report. Attorney Talberg?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and Happy New Year. We had a busy holiday season. There wasn't really a holiday break in our office. We had last week, within the past week, two emergency status conferences with Judge Berger about the emergency request for a temporary injunction that I referenced at our last council meeting concerning the property at 117 North Maple. We're supposed to have a trial on that this afternoon and tomorrow, but it looks like we're very close to have a resolution of at least the injunctive part of that case. So we're going to be back with the judge later this week, and perhaps at some point in the near future, I can brief you in executive session. The rest of what we did over the holidays is not really fit for public discussion, and so that's the extent of our report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the town attorney? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Happy New Year. Moving on to item 11, the reports of any special committees of the town. Councillor Mueller?
I spoke to Patrice late today, it was around 4:30. There's a special program called V-Safe that everyone is provided when they get vaccinated. It actively tracks them for a week and then reduces frequency in order to provide information to the manufacturer. If anyone reports an adverse side effect to Patrice, she has a form that they are required to submit and fill out, not only for the vaccine, but anything, the flu, anything vaccine that they get. We've done approximately 110 vaccines so far. How much of the vaccine is available and who is in the next groups or groups is decided at the state level? And anyone can go to ct.gov. The estimate for starting the next phase of eligible people is anywhere between January and May. So it's really hard to tell, it's like a moving target right now. There are many partners engaged in the vaccination, and her staff are ready to scale up or down and pivot relatively quickly to serve our community. Thank you.
Similar to Councillor Sacala's questions earlier about sending questions to Chris, everyone, Cindy, I'm sorry, Councillor Mangini and Councillor Mueller's are representatives to the North Central Health District. Feel free to send them questions if you have. I know there's a lot of things going on, so I think it's easier for Patrice and her staff, we do it through a couple folks instead of all of us. I know, I'm sure we all hear our own questions, our own comments on what's going on, so if we could just maybe, if you have questions, send them through Councillor Mangini and Councillor Mueller. Since you mentioned, is the form given to the individual when they get the vaccine, or they have to actually go out and get it themselves?
I could find out. I believe it's, if it's reported to Patrice.
Okay. So they, all right, so they actually have.
She submits the form to the manufacturer.
All right. Because I think we probably should be telling the individual when they get it, in my opinion. Sorry. That's just, I mean, just, sorry, it's my opinion, nothing more than that. Any questions for, on the Health Central, Councillor Mueller? None? All set, sir?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Well, facilities will be back at it. It's all we do. It really was great to see that and all the stuff integrated that has been going on for the past 10 years. So what they're going to be starting is, you had the presentation by Green Bank, and the Clean Energy Subcommittee has been meeting, and they're going to bring three properties to the facilities with their blessings, to have Green Bank look at them. This is for solar, it'd be at no cost to the town and no work for our staff. So with that, we'll be moving forward on that, and we're going to establish, I guess, either a Subcommittee or we'll work on it, the full committee, but we're going to look at vestibules, because vestibules need to be put on our schools and the windows. So I know at one point, Brian gave me a choice. He said, you've got $125,000, what do you want, a playscape or a vestibule? And I chose a playscape. So maybe somebody else might have to share that part of it. So with that, I would like to say that West Hartford actually put on solar arrays, and they are saving a quarter million dollars at their middle school with solar arrays. So we're going to look at it and see what we get and bring it back to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the Facilities Committee? Guys, good? Anyone else? Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead, yep, sorry.
Just a reminder, we're going to have a meeting for the DPW for the trash. If anyone has any questions they need answered, please get ahold of me tomorrow, and if I don't have the answer, I will get it for you at Wednesday's meeting.
Call them willingly and often. Moving on, anything else? Hearing none, moving on to item 12, old business. On page one, items A, one and two, there is none. Moving to the top of page two, items in old business, items three through 14, there are none. Moving to the top of page three, item B, appointments for the town manager, council approved. Items one through 13, there are none. Moving to the top of page four, again, under old business, town manager approved, council approved, council approved, 14 through 16, there are none. There are no C, appointments from the Planning and Zoning Commission appointed, council approved. Item D, the MOU of the Fire District stays on the table. Item 13, new business, A, there is no consent agenda. Item B1 has been moved to miscellaneous. Item B2 stays on the table. Item B3 stays on the table, which again, these are appointments to Commission on Aging, Library Board of Trustees. And item B4, again.
Yeah, we have an appointment.
Yeah, I know, B1 has already been moved to miscellaneous.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying, these, yep, you're right. That's going to be on miscellaneous. Item B4, Library Board of Trustees, again, stays on the table. There are no, item C, appointments, town manager appointed, council approved, there are none. Item D, appointments, oh, you didn't move, I'm sorry, you didn't move it on. I'm sorry, Councillor Mangini, you're right, I thought it was part of our, no, so I always go to B1. I apologize, you are exactly correct. Reappointment, Commission on Aging, item B1. Do I have a nomination, please?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward the reappointment for Judy Kilty.
Nomination made?
Second.
By Councillor Mangini, seconded by Councillor Sacala. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Uh-huh.
By Councillor Sacala, seconded by Councillor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands? Eleven in favor, zero against, Suzanne, in closing nominations. Any discussion on the main item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Judy Kilty.
Councillor Mueller.
Four.
Councillor Riley.
Four.
Councillor Fraser.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councillor Ungar.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Yeah.
Councillor Sacala.
Judy Kilty.
There's eleven in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne, I apologize. B2, Commission on Aging reappointment stays on the table. B3, Library Board of Trustees stays on the table. And B4, Library Trustees reappointment stays on the table. Item C, appointments in a new business, town manager appointed, council approved, there are none. Item D, P&amp;Z appointed, council approved, items D1 and 2, again, stay on the table. Item 14, items for discussion. Item A, there is no consent agenda. Item B, appointments, town council appointed, there are none. Item C, appointments, town manager appointed, council approved, there are none. And item D, P&amp;Z commission appointed, council approved, there are none. There is no item E, so F, G, H, and I have been moved to miscellaneous. J stays on the table, discussion resolution, authorizing the town manager to sign a real estate purchase on behalf of the town of Enfield for the sale of 92 Post Office Road, stays on the table, will move to new business next meeting. We move to item 15, which is miscellaneous. Item F, let me get there, sorry. Discussion resolution, item F under miscellaneous. Request for transfer funds to replace a portion of the Eli Whitney School roof at Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, following transfers hereby made. From general revenue of appropriate fund balance of $235,550 to the general fund unallocated transfers of $235,550. Grant projects, so we're getting grant money from the state grant project, 437,450, and $235,550 from the Revenue General Fund, moving it over to the Eli Whitney School Construction Fund of, do we need to do the math, of, oh, boy, right at the minute, the 600, I'm doing math on a fly here, so it's always dangerous, three, seven, $673,100, pretty good. So that's the limit, including the grant fund money, certification approved that the funds are available, and John can correct my number, math if I'm incorrect, of December 28th, 2020, by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson. Councillor Mueller, seconded by Councillor Mangini. So obviously, yeah, this is just a continuation of, I don't know if John or you want to give any comments, but this is obviously, again.
I do not, we covered it last time. John, I saw him when you were doing your math, he unmuted, then he remasked, so I guess he didn't disagree.
I'm pretty good on the fly, John.
Yeah, well, that's one of your strong suits, Mayor, so if he has nothing to add, then I guess you could proceed to vote.
Any comments from any councillors? Again, this is just a combination of what we had, the presentation at the beginning of the meeting, again, the Joint Facilities Committee with the Board of Education, led by Deputy Mayor Suzak, Councillor Sacala, Councillor Riley, and our town staff, again, continuing to move forward, adjusting based on the realities of what we've been through in the last year, but we're still getting these important projects underway. So well done to the Facilities Committee. Any other comments from anyone? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Mueller.
Four.
Councillor Riley.
Four.
Councillor Fraser.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councillor Ungar.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
Councillor Sacala.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Be ready next meeting. Moving on to item G, under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds to replace a portion of the Hazville Memorial School roof at $235,550. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. From the general fund of $235,550 to the general fund unallocated transfers of $235,550. From grant projects, $437,450, and the $235,550 for a total of $673,000, $673,000 to the Hazville Memorial Project roof, line item of $673,000. Certified that the above funds are available, is December 28th, 2020, by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson. By Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Councillors Mangini. Again, the, any comments of another big project underway? Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Okay, everybody, that is the referendum limit. So, you know, we're going to look to do the most that we can do, and hopefully the Eli Whitney can be done in two phases. I mean, that's our hope, but I keep saying, you know, maybe the grand list will grow and we'll get a little more money.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Mueller.
Four.
Councillor Riley.
Four.
Councillor Fraser.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councillor Ungar.
Four.
Councillor Riley. Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Secala.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item H under miscellaneous, discussion resolution, resolution to settle pending property tax appeal, Huntington Chase Development. Resolve the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the town attorney, James N. Talberg or his designee to settle the outstanding tax assessment appeal in the following action. Huntington Chase Development LLC versus Town of Enfield, docket number HHB-CV-20-6061046S. The fair market value of the property is $160,000. It has to be $4,850,000. Office approved by the Office of the Town Attorney in December 22, 2020. So moved. By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. Attorney Talberg, I don't know if, I will turn over to you if you have any comments. Feel free.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I would just note that this is a resolution, a negotiated resolution through council of a pending tax appeal. It was brought against the town and filed in the Superior Court. The resolution was negotiated by Assistant Town Attorney Mark Serrato with the town's tax assessor. For the reasons that we discussed in executive session at the last meeting, we fully endorse and recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of the council? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Frazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Secala.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item I under miscellaneous, it's a discussion resolution, authorizing social services to establish a revenue account and to utilize funds for the procurement of heating, fuel, and gas for eligible families, whereas the impact of the pandemic has left some working families negatively impacted financially. Whereas the Alpha Delta Kappa Teacher Sorority has identified this population as one of which they would like to make donations to assist with the procurement for heating, fuel, and gas during the cold winter weather season this year, whereas any unspent donations are to be used in the cold weather season next year for impacted working families. Resolve that the town manager or his designee is authorized to establish the revenue account of 22046140417050 for the Alpha Delta Kappa Teacher Sorority donations to be used to procure heating, fuel, and gas for eligible working families negatively impacted by the pandemic, submitted by our Director of Social Services, Cindy Guerrier, on December 28, 2020. So moved. By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Riley. Cindy on, or?
No, Kasia is available, Assistant Town Manager, to answer any questions on this, if you have any.
Welcome. I know, Kasia, if you want to make any comments, or just want to make sure, anything, you have the floor.
Sure. Good evening. So as you heard, the Alpha Delta Kappa Teacher Sorority has identified that they would like to donate funds to Alice families in Enfield, and Alice stands for Asset Limited Income and Spring Employed. So this is the working, or the working people who are still working actively but struggling to make ends meet. And based on their website, it seems that a third of Connecticut's families actually are Alice families, who are working but unable to cover expenses. And these families actually are not eligible for state assistance, the LIHE program, they would not be eligible for. The donation will likely be anywhere between $300 to $1,500, and it will be administered by social services. It will be first time, first served.
Thank you, Kasia. Any questions from anyone? Counselor Riley?
I've worked with the ladies of Alpha Delta Kappa before through First Readers, and they're a great organization. I was just wondering if this account that we're establishing will allow normal citizens to donate funds into it as well, to add to the pot of money that the Alice families can use.
Kasia, I don't know if you heard that question?
I think-
I did, I did hear the question. I am unable to answer that. I'm not sure if Mr. Wilcox-
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe John can, or he can get, he can get it back to us if he knows offhand, he can opine. There he is.
We originally established it as they would, but I don't understand if somebody else wanted to donate with the same stipulations that we could use that account for those as well.
I agree with you, John. I think that's probably correct, but if, I don't know if we have to verify it. I mean, this is a great program, and first of all, I want to thank Alpha, I want to make sure I get it right, Alpha Delta Kappa Teacher Sorority for doing this, because, I mean, that's, that's the working, whether it be a single family or it could even be a multifamily that is, you know, struggling, but is working and wants to do the right thing and pay their taxes and work for a living. This is a huge program, and I hope maybe through them, I mean, I want to make sure they get the credit, can we expand this program to, again, because I know there's a need in town, and we've, I think some of us went to this, I don't want to say it was training, but program last year when it came to Alice through the United Way, and they're, I mean, before the pandemic, so it's not even talk about the pandemic. People were work, were still working and were struggling to make ends meet. This is an important program, so I, you know, Counselor Riley, if there's a way, maybe we can figure out through Kite or whatever to expand it, to see if other people will donate, it's a great program. So I don't know, Kasia, if I can throw that at you and maybe reach out, you know, we'd love to, we'll partner with Al, you know, again, the sorority, because it's there, you know, we're going to give them the credit for doing this, but there definitely is a need in this town.
Sure, we will definitely, I'll speak with Director of Social Services tomorrow and John to understand, Al, what we can do with this.
Again, I appreciate social service understanding there's a need. I mean, that's the other thing, is that we're trying to do something about it, so it's great. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hemmler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Frazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
I'm sorry. Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Secala.
Four.
Here's eleven in favor and none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item 16, public communications. Again, there is none. Any, item 17, any counselor communications? Counselor Mangini?
I just want to wish Suzanne happy, healthy retirement. And Suzanne, it's been a pleasure knowing you all these years, and you have done a super, super job for our town, and God bless you.
Well said. Anyone else have any? Counselor Mueller?
Hi, Suzanne. I want to congratulate you as well. Who's going to keep us all in line? It's an honor to know you, and thanks for all you've done to keep us going. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Susak?
First, Suzanne, enjoy your retirement. Sometimes it's hard to stay retired. I guess this is a question I have through, when are we having our next WPCA meeting? I don't want to get into budget, and we haven't looked at a lot of things. I know we did have that subcommittee at one time, and I hate to give more work to the facilities. I'm sorry, Gina, but that was what the subcommittee was, and, you know, if we need to be vetting some stuff, I think, you know, we, we had a big rate increase, we were getting ready for bonding, and we're finishing up the project. I think it might behoove us to, you know-
Good. We can talk about scheduling that tomorrow.[1546.32]